Here it looks nice.
Any questions?
I didn't mind today.
Welcome to the January 23rd, 2024 East Bridgewater School Committee meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your colleague, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to EB Cam for recording and live streaming our meetings. And we will kick this off with a report from Lilia.
Hi, everyone. This Friday is the junior and senior class lock-in, so it's from 9:00 PM to 6:00 in the morning, so should be a long day, but a lot going on. I know there's basketball games and everything, so I'm sure everyone will be exhausted, but it should be fun. There'll be gym activities and movies in the auditorium and activities in the cafeteria in Bandroom as well. I think we're gonna do like video games and board games in the CAF, so it's exciting. Two weeks, two weeks out, there's a high school dance, which will be Saturday, February 10th in the gym, the Sweethearts Dance, so like Valentine's theme. The 7th and 8th graders had their semi-formal last Friday in the cafeteria, and I've heard great things about it, especially just a note on how well the advisors put together the dance and the executive members, and I heard the, it was set up very well and run smoothly, so that's good to hear. Tomorrow night is the first rehearsal for Mr. EBHS, so I'm excited for that. It's one of the shows to add to the list this winter. The middle school produced their production of Frozen Junior this past weekend, and I heard it was amazing and so fun. And the high school department continues to practice for Momea. Tonight is gymnastics senior night, so the two seniors from East Bridgewater will be recognized and two more from Brockton, and then they'll go against Cohasset-Norwell. And then hockey senior night is tomorrow. I think we have one senior. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Thank you. Good luck.
And now I have a statement to read on behalf of the committee. The school committee became aware of allegations associated with the payroll practices involving a former employee in 2023. After an independent review by a third-party investigator, it was determined that there was no wrongdoing or violation of school committee policy by the superintendent.
Underneath my corner, I have a few things on the FY25 budget. Getting ready for this, it takes a little bit of time, we're putting it together. John's gonna talk a little bit about it tonight, go over his reports, but we have to have a budget hearing for the community so that we can put our budget out, so they have time to review it and take a look at it. There's a couple of dates, I think, you know, the earlier the better, I think sometimes, we can always come down if we need to. I was looking at a date of February 27th. I know that is a quick date, but the date of the hearing, or the date of the town meeting is May 13th this year. So that just gives us about enough time of school days to have a, we can do it the third week, and we could do it in the second or third week in March, but we can always have the first, we can have the budget hearing, talk about it, and if we have, we have to move monies around, we can do so. Last year we came out, we had a couple of weeks, I think, I don't think anybody called us or anybody came in to get the budget from us. We have it up online, we post it online, we'll post it every place that we can. We do a full summary of what we spent in capital projects from the year before, what we're doing with the monies from the year before, the professional development we offered, the curriculum and instruction that we offered, all the things that we did in the '24 budget and what we hope to do in the '25 budget, why we need to be allocated the funding going forward. We hope that by next week that the governor will release her first round of the budget for us, and we'll see our Chapter 70.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, that's right. Where are we? We're, we're, we're close to it, so she's done her, I think last year, though, we got pushed off a couple of days, so I'm hoping that we'll get it tomorrow and we'll see where we're at in Chapter 70. I hope it goes up, I don't know. We do know that special education costs have gone through the roof on out-of-district placement. We do know that our special needs population has increased, but our supports should not stop, nor should we stop what we are doing in allocating in curriculum and instruction and what we're doing for students every day and for our faculty and our staff. So with that being said, we will continue to formulate, we'll continue to work with our principals, we will continue to work with all staff. We have four negotiations coming up with four units, custodians, ISAs, secretaries, and APs, and I have some individual contracts that will come up, but other than that, I think we are in good shape. I think that East Bridgewater has a great school system, I think people come to East Bridgewater, buy homes in East Bridgewater to be part of our entire community, but I think the schools are a draw. We also have the building project at Central School that, you know, is in the feasibility study phase at this time, and we won't hear until a few weeks from now until we get to sit with MSBA, and they let us know as we're moving forward. Everybody heard that we have a turf field, that that's a big project. We hope that the funds on February 20th will be supported by the community in a special town meeting, I think it's about 1.5 million, to redo the turf and the, the track around it. That is a community school field that we use, rec uses, people rent it from us throughout the summer and in the fall, our rec leagues use it, our, our sports programs are, that is, by far, first of all, it's a focal point, it's beautiful, but it's, if not 365 days a year, 364 days a year, there's somebody out either on that track, whether people are running or walking or kids are practicing, and the field needs help. I think that there is a push by the town and certainly by us to make sure that when we do projects like this, that we are looking, if, if, if they say it's a 15-year longevity on a field, we should, we need to think of how much money we need to put away every year for 15 years if it's a 1.5 or $2 million project, and start doing those things. I was at a meeting last night with Mr. Shea about the field, and that's what we hear, is that, you know, we need to do more of this. We've been saying this for, since I've been here for nine years, you know, to, if we know what's happening, we want, you know, stability. You need, we know that the field needs help. We know that we need to replace pianos. We know that we need to replace windows and doors. We, we have doors that, at the middle school that are sticking. We have entranceways that may need help. We had a shelter in place today, we had a locks that did not work in this building that we've been talking about over and over again. So we do have facilities plans in places, in place, and we need to keep up with them. We know that it's costly to maintain buildings, we all have a home, most of us have a home or you even have, or you rent. It's costly. You're always repairing, you're always doing a new roof, you're always working on your driveway, your grass, plumbing, heating, HVAC system, whatever it is. There's gotta be more planning, and I think the collaboration effort between the town and the schools, I think we need to maintain that collaboration and work together and to continue the greatness that we have with all the buildings and all the schools and all, and, and all of the towns. So as we move forward with this FY25 budget, those, that was just a date I threw out, something to talk about, I mean, we can come back on February 3rd, or 6th, that's our next meeting?
6th.
The 6th, on the 13th.
No, our next committee meeting.
Committee meeting. No, she's right, 13th.
No, the, because, because the building committee meets on the 6th.
Oh, you're right.
Okay, the 13th. So the next, I've got, I think we're pretty much booked for the remainder of February, but if on the 13th, we can come back and sort of set that date in. And it doesn't have to be on that date, I can shoot some other dates out to you, but I just want you to know, I think the earlier, the better.
Well, would, do you think, would we be able to set a date tonight? Is that something we can do? Because I just think about the, the season and what it does look like to book these things, and waiting till the 13th potentially causes issue. The 27th is a school committee night anyway?
Right, I like, I like having the budget hearing on a school committee night anyway. My concern, I know we want to have our, we want to have time for the budget subcommittee.
Oh, for the budget subcommittee.
To meet, because the message we heard at the meeting last week was it was gonna probably be a tough budget season, and I want the budget subcommittee to have the opportunity to really take a good look at everything before we present. And I just don't know if we're gonna have time to do that between posting regulations and scheduling and all of that and other meetings that we have scheduled already to be able to do that by February 27th.
And what did you say about early March? Does that feel too late in terms of sharing?
No, I just want to make sure, I think that sometime, we can go, you know, that last year, the meeting was moved to June, so then we went out and then we waited and waited, and it's, it's, it's a labor of love, because you're sitting there waiting to know if you've got a budget and what's gonna happen and, and, and all these last-minute things go into that. I just thought getting out there, I mean, go the second week of March, the earlier, the better for us, I think that that's always the best, is to come out and say, last year we were, I believe it's 25 million plus for our budget, so we know we're going to be over 25 million.
Right, but I think that's why the, it's important for us to sit down and look at everything and make sure.
Yeah, I agree, Lauren, I, I'm saying that we could meet every, every week up until that point, I'm just saying the sooner the better, so the, you know, but it's gotta come out in March, so it's gotta come out one of those weeks in March.
Gordon's got his hand raised.
Lose two questions, one is the presentation to the town is not our certification, correct?
Right, that is, it's just getting our budget out there.
Right, and the, the second point is, when we do present to the town or when you present to the town, will that give us enough time for this new company that you're working with, this new marketing company, to help put together the presentation?
Yes.
Are they not starting until July, or are they starting this year?
They're starting this year on some of these pieces, and then in July we'll take on the, the full plar. I mean, we don't have, I'm just, I'm, I threw that out there, I threw February 27th out there, we can go March.
12th.
March 12th. I'm just, I, I know we need so many days prior to the town meeting, I know that we need people to be able to see the process, to see the budget, and I'm just, just putting it out there.
We could always have the public hearing and then come back and certify on a different day, that's what we've done.
Well, that's how you have to.
Yeah.
You have the public hearing, and then you don't even have to certify the following school committee meeting, you can wait two school committee meetings.
I just feel like if we're gonna go public with something and have a whole presentation written about it, it should be in as final form as we can make it by then.
It, there's not gonna be, once we come out, it's usually pretty much in its final form, what I'm saying is, we will continue to hear from the town, if we come out with, I don't even wanna put it, I don't even wanna say a number, because it'll come back that I said 50 million. It's just, I'm just trying to get it out there earlier than later, because we're gonna continue to have meetings, even though we're having meetings as subcommittee meetings with the town as we go up, John and I will continue to meet.
Right, but I think we want to have at least one subcommittee meeting, just the subcommittee without the town.
Oh, sure.
So that's what I mean.
Okay.
Having to try to figure all of this out by February 27th just feels tight to me.
Yeah, so that, I don't think would end up working, so then we'd be looking at, March 12th would be seven weeks from now.
So go March 12th.
I'm more comfortable with March 12th, and that gives us three meetings without waiting until the last minute to certify, make any adjustments we need to make, recertify, whatever.
I throw, I throw it out there to you so that we can get the discussion going, because if I don't, then we sort of like, well, where are we? So I said February 27th, to me, we can do it in mid-March, I just, I want to make sure that I've done it enough that no matter what we come out with, and no matter what we say, it's gonna, you know, who's, who's gonna lose on, and there's, the, the bigger departments are DPW, fire, police, and we're the largest. And then it's gonna be like, how do we do this, and how are we doing this, and who's gonna get this, and how are we, so I just know all of that, that movement, and that's why I just throw that date out. So, I mean, March, March is fine, I'm just trying to get out ahead of it, that's all.
So then would that happen at a scheduled time after our scheduled meeting?
Budget hearing, no, it's usually at this, wasn't it at the same time last year, or is it?
Last year it was a totally different thing, it was a totally different night.
It was a week before, what, I don't have.
So we've done it both ways, we had the public hearing and then went right into a regular meeting.
Last year's was, last year's was, Lauren, last year's was March 8th.
Okay.
So it could be that.
Work isn't that far off.
No, I just, I just pushed it a week earlier.
Yeah.
So.
So in terms of the time for it, we're scheduled to meet at 6:00, so when?
It would be a week prior to your school committee meeting, usually, you get it out there.
No, I thought, I thought we wanted to have it the same.
Same day?
Yeah.
You could have it at 5:00 PM, 6:00, and then your school committee at 6:00, you don't have to certify, you don't certify that day, wait two weeks so that people have an opportunity to look at it, you have an opportunity to look at it.
I just like, for the sake of all of our time, to be able to have it on a night that's already dedicated to school committee.
So five.
For the budget hearing? No, this is for the budget hearing.
No, but the thing is, I don't want to have a meeting at 5:00.
That would be the hearing.
That's the hearing, is an hour enough, you think? I don't know if we need to bump our meeting to 6:30, just to give you more time.
I don't like having the budget hearing at 5:00 o'clock on a weekday either. You're doing it at 6:00.
What's on the agenda for, I mean, sorry, what's the schedule for the, the March 12th day in terms of who we're hearing from?
I don't have it on me.
Yeah.
I don't have it either.
Okay, so maybe the time part gets worked out, but we just keep it in our mind that March 12th would be the day?
You can give up your school committee meeting for that. That would be the agenda.
Probably a couple of longer meetings on either end, but I think they're gonna be kind of focused on this stuff anyway.
And March 12th is the meeting that I told Peter we were gonna talk about?
I was gonna say, isn't there something?
That's why it's in my brain already.
Like, there's, I feel like that was a timeframe of anticipated information.
Well, that's gonna be discussed at one of the meetings anyway, it doesn't need to be, you know what I mean? The stuff that we were meant to cover on that meeting day isn't gonna be erased, it would just be moved to a different meeting, either the one immediately prior or the one immediately following.
We'll be there whatever time you guys decide.
For something like this, do we need to make some sort of motion to move the meeting or something?
To, well, we could just make that our meeting.
Gotcha. Oh, that's the, gotcha. Okay. So the date is the 12th, time is TBD.
Yeah, and then we just need to determine, yeah, so if we're okay with that being our meeting, I think we could have it at 6:00 and just spread out whatever we're supposed to cover that night to the other meetings, prioritize appropriately, whether it's the meeting before, the meeting after. And then, yeah.
Works for me. Gordon, are you good with that?
Might be muted.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, he had to unmute himself.
Then you have the draft of the school calendar, I don't know, Gina, if you want to chime in, I know that we do have, it's in draft form, and there still have some meetings to do with Professional Development Academy, but I'll let Gina speak to that.
Yeah, it's very premature, I know Mrs. Foster, you requested for it to be on the agenda, but I prefer us to table it because PD Academy would meet on it and the parent conference committee would meet on it, it goes through the EBA, the building principals, so this is what this year's calendar exactly looks like, but certainly we want to make sure we vet it through those groups, because we've had some conversations about front-loading some of the PD like we did this year, so I don't want to confuse things by having you look at this and then have some.
No, that's fine, I, we don't typically vote on this until sometime like.
Right, I was surprised to, I didn't request to have it on the agenda, we discussed it in our meeting, it was brought up and I said, "Fine," but yeah, it is very early for this, so that's, if you, we can absolutely table it and come back.
Great, that would be great.
When it's ready.
Thank you.
So we hired Ted Johnson as our new head custodian, I just wanted to bring this up because last time we had Doug Ortenzi here, he is retired Ted Johnson Central School Lead Custodian, he'll take over those responsibilities of helping us with the, the snow and getting custodians ready and moving people around. And then the lead custodian at the high school who takes over Doug's position is Ed Sweeney, who's been in the district over 20 years, so we welcome them to those two new positions. Mrs. Byrne, it is not on here, but because it's my corner, I had a little bit of latitude, Mrs. Byrne talked about the pre, or we talked about the pre-K lottery at the last meeting, Mrs. Byrne will be sending out correspondence for pre-K next week, they're getting their final numbers by this Friday, and I asked Mr. Walker if he would mind coming over to the lottery that day to sit with Mrs. Byrne at the school or wherever they have it or wherever they do it, and he said that he would volunteer as a school committee member to do so. We also have Mr. Walker, myself, and Dr. Williams met with the Diversity Equity Inclusion Equity Audit Companies, we had sent out a couple more, two of the companies wrote back and said they had filled capacity, couldn't meet with us, so we're down to the two people, and the other third one is from California, and that's sort of a different, how they do theirs is a different makeup. So we were having two, we, I actually asked Scott today, thinking that possibly bringing both of the companies in on February 6th, actually, February 13th, I'm sorry, February 13th, for sort of a school committee interview where they would get 10 to 15 minutes of time to come out and tell you exactly what their scope of their audit would look like, what they would do for the district, how long it would take, and what they would produce at the end of the audit for the district. And that way, the school committee can meet with the companies that, that we met with and pushing forward to here. So I thought that that on February 13th would be okay. We also, Ellen Pennington was here yesterday, Michael and myself went through the SuperEVAL training on the new evaluation forums, it took us about, about an hour, a little bit longer, because we did have a lot of questions just on the forums and how do you upload and, and who sees it, who doesn't see it, how does it move forward? She was excellent, I think it'll be down to like 45 minutes by the time that you do that, Ellen is going to get to everybody and come out and ask questions, I believe, on it, but the training was, was good, Gretchen was very, very receptive and responsive.
I'm gonna ask questions.
You, didn't you want to ask everybody when they wanted to meet?
Oh, I wrote, I wrote notes to myself, oh, yeah.
You told me to throw you the ball, I'm sorry, I'll ask everybody.
I, yeah, I was gonna say, when could we all meet, and also, I did ask a bunch of questions yesterday, I thought it was very helpful, it was helpful to go through it, only just asking, you know, as, as far as the timeframe, which she, she probably didn't get back to you yet. So I asked some questions that she's gonna get back to us about, as far as how they can do something in their system.
It says mid-year review instead of mid-cycle, we're asking them to change it to mid-cycle review, because it's a two-year evaluation.
Changing the date or whatever.
Yep, so we're just asking them to change those dates, which they don't, I don't think it's gonna be a problem, she just needed to go back to her network system operator.
Oh, and then she was gonna get back about something, oh, that was what I was gonna ask, I, I didn't write my question clearly. So the question that I had was, and that I was talking about with Liz and the woman is, so there's an, the ability to, for the chair of the committee or whoever is the designee or whatever, or more than one person to actually look, so I can't, I can't possibly tell you what the, the software looks like, because you have to see it, but there's a capability for someone to go in and be able to see who's done what for action, like what committee member started filling out their, their evaluation, or if they haven't started and they should have already started, so you have the ability, or someone will have the ability to email those people and, and make sure that it's getting done or whatever, and, or if there's questions, and so we can either designate, designate one person or designate more than one person. And so that, that was what the question that I had was, do we want the chair of the subcommittee to do it, or the chair of the committee to do it, or both people to do it, or, or what does everybody want to do?
So this is like a role within the system that kind of has.
Yes.
Administrative powers and.
Yes.
You can't see what anybody else is writing, you wouldn't see that.
What's completed and what's not completed, yeah.
50% complete, Peter's 100%.
Ours works at work, too.
Yeah, I've never seen a system like this before, it was, whoever thought of, thought of it was genius.
I think I'm not committed to this, but I think it would probably make sense for someone on the evaluation subcommittee to do this, but I am willing to be disagreed with on that one.
Oh, I would totally do it, since I'm, I kind of, they had the committee, the subcommittee, so I would totally do it, and I have the time to do it.
Okay with everybody else? Yeah?
Thanks for that.
I'm not trying to give myself more work or anything, but I just.
Sounds like you are.
Sounds like you are.
My last, just my last informational tidbit would be snow calls. When we make a decision on canceling school or a two-hour delay or a one-hour delay or releasing students early, we do not make it in a bubble, I do not make it alone, I work with the police, the fire, DPW, and certainly other school districts to find out what their thoughts are, when they're gritting on the road, when they're releasing students or when they're bringing kids in. I put out a sort of snow message last week on Penn Square, God bless you.
I thought it was well done.
Thank you. We put that out last week, just to let everybody know how we make these decisions, I know that some people like me to make them the night before. We, we try very hard to make them the night before, so that you do have, or that parents do have the availability of, school's off tomorrow, we need a babysitter, we need someone to stop in, we need, we try to do that. There are times that I can't do that, and I know a couple of people had reached out to me and said, you know, can you just always make them the night before? I wish that I could, and I wish that I knew, but I can't, just like tonight, it's icy, they say the snow's coming and it's icy, gonna be later this evening, we have a basketball game going on, I would like to tell all of our students who have driven to the game this evening, even their parents and community members, please take it easy going home, they're out with their salters, they're trying to do the best that they can to pre-treat the roads. Last week, we had a basketball game down in Sandwich on Friday, we, Sandwich canceled due to, and usually it's because of the bridge, the wind and the ice, and once you get down there, I mean, these kids are getting out at 9:00 at night, they're getting back on a bus, and they've gotta come back. So we all work together, whether it's the, the athletic director calling all their ADs during the day, or whether myself on, on the snow messaging of the, the lighthouse superintendents, and we have 50 superintendents on there going back and forth throughout the day. So I just want people to know, we do the best that we can, whether it's a closing or a delay, and we'll continue to do that, and we'll continue to get the information out as quickly as possible. But a couple of people had called my office or emailed. So that's it. But a couple of people had called my office or emailed me and said, "Please always make them at night." It's hard to do that. We'd like to, but it-
Well, it's a no-win situation. You can make a call at night because they said we're supposed to get six inches of snow, and then the storm shifts two feet, and we end up getting nothing. And then you've got a bunch of angry people saying, "Why wasn't there school today?"
It's right.
So it's a tough one.
Right.
Gordon has his hand raised.
I'm sorry to go back a little bit. On the Super superintendent eval training, are we going to do that at a regular meeting, or are we going to do that at a special meeting?
What would you like to do? That was- actually, I was going to go back to that. What would you like to do?
If we have room, we could do it in a regular meeting, but I'm available whenever.
How long do you think it would take?
Boy, oh, I would say, well, going through the way that the woman went through it with us, I'd say, because we were in your office at least an hour and a half. I don't think it was more than that, but it was about an hour and a half. So I would say, in order for people and knowing-
Yeah, you had said 45 minutes, a couple minutes.
I think 45 minutes because now I think Ellen has asked a lot of questions that people are going to come up with, and I think she could brief the subcommittee or the committee prior to the meeting of all these. And I think that when Gretchen Restivo sends us back the email, which she said that she would do, I think getting that back to you-
Well, that's what you meant, do that.
And I think you get a briefing, and then we'll also release SuperEVAL to you. So you'll be able to look at it by yourself prior to getting on it, so you can have your questions ready. And then you'll be able to- and she ran through it very quickly with me. I just think there was good questions from Ellen that came up at the end.
And it's not hard. It's just getting familiarized with it.
Yeah.
You know?
So I think it's going to be 45 minutes. I don't know if we want to fill, especially we just had a whole conversation about how our meetings are going to be-
Maybe we could do like a separate workshop. We could do a workshop so that-
Lauren, she also said she would do individual meetings if-
Oh, right.
If people could not make meetings-
With no additional cost?
With no additional cost. She's willing to do that.
That might be- that might be the way to go.
So two people might want to do it together. One person may want to do it. So, you know.
That may be the good idea.
That's a good idea to try doing two and two, and that way at least she's not into the same question.
Yeah. She was very receptive.
I just know, as a group, it's hard to get everybody together. So it might work if we break up into a couple of different groups.
One thing I can tell you-
Or schedule, like, take a couple. We can send availability or whatever, all of us, and then you can pick a couple of dates and a couple of people or whatever.
Yeah. Or maybe what people, if they're given access early, they can have time to familiarize themselves with it, look through it, and then write down questions. And that way, maybe, you know, try and consolidate or streamline it or whatever.
My thought was that if the mid-cycle review, I think we talked about in April, is due, so you start to back up, the time starts to get kind of short. So I just wanted to make sure we nail something down so that-
We won't need to do this.
We're not learning the software and trying to complete it at the same time. That's all.
We won't need to do this in April. She's- we won't- we'll see. So Liz would be putting her evidence in the software, and then we would get an update. But there's- I mean, we could. I don't know.
Well, that's- let's focus on getting everybody up to date on the system. How soon did you say Gretchen could do these things for us if we were to schedule them?
She's pretty- she's pretty available. She's getting a lot of school districts in Massachusetts right now, and so she was pretty much- she was leaving us going to another district right then, so.
So in theory, if a few of us had availability, like next week, two weeks-
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Would be- so we could, if that's the route, then we're quickly doing it. In April, there's no issue with-
We could probably write her an email tomorrow, and she could give us a couple of dates that she's available and sometimes and send them out to you, and you can say, "I can do it. I can do it."
We can like sign up.
You could do it from your own office.
Yep. Yeah, that's the thing. Stuff that I can do. I can squeeze in a half hour, 45 minutes, and-
I think it'd be-
I like that idea.
I think yours is similar, Lauren.
Yeah.
The way we talked about it. So I think it'll be easy.
Perfect. All right. Well, perfect for me. I'm not speaking for anybody else. I don't know. Works for me. Does it work for you?
Works for me.
Is that everything you had? Does anybody have any other questions for anything that we just?
Oh, I want to say one thing. So you know what would be really excellent? Because you were on the subcommittee, SuperEVAL Subcommittee, a long time ago. So as far as compiling, so the system will actually do the compiling.
Nice.
And it actually, yes. So, and it actually will take, it'll- you'll, when she goes through it, you'll like it. You'll like that part. I thought that was great.
It's painful, so yes. So we would end up hearing from-
Gretchen Restivo.
Gretchen. So she'll directly email us, or-
I think we'll get to her, and then we'll tell you the dates, and then we'll give her your names.
So we'll hear some- we'll hear an email from you. Got it. Okay. So on to John Shea. Now, John, this is just a business report, right?
Yes.
That you prepared for tonight. Yes.
Yeah. This is something else you want me to talk about?
Nope. Fine with me.
I gave you a pretty large packet of information. A lot of it is informative, and we don't really have to discuss a lot of it here unless you want to. The first page I have is the operating budget status. This is the same one we went through two weeks ago, but I wanted to just go into a little more detail on this. You can look at the non-salary available balance. And January 7th was $200,654. Last year at this time, the available balance in the non-salary line was $612. So that is a little concerning, that we're- we have a $400,000 difference compared to last year at this time. So what's driving that? Mainly two things: transportation and out-of-district, out-of-district tuitions. Right now, our transportation for homeless foster care and special education is about $180,000 over budget, and our out-of-district tuitions are just about break-even, a little over budget. But what is a little concerning is that we have the possibility of five more students going out of district this year.
Before the end of this year.
Before the end of this year.
Now, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I just thought of this the second. Can you explain to me how circuit breaker works?
Short version?
An elevator version?
I can- I can try. So there's-
I don't feel so bad for not understanding completely.
And I- so I was thinking maybe this might come up, so I did a little summary. So I'll try to explain it. So there's- right now, there's three types of circuit breaker. There's a circuit breaker, normal circuit breaker, there's extraordinary relief circuit breaker, and there's also reserve relief circuit breaker.
Okay.
So basically, the way circuit breaker works, Jay and his staff do an awesome job. They do, Joanne Connors and Jay Fallon, they do an awesome job. So every year, by line item, by student, they tabulate the tuition costs, the instructional costs, and the transportation cost for each student that goes out of district.
Yep.
That, for each student, there's a comparison to what's called a threshold. So in fiscal year '23, that threshold was $49,494. So if you have a student that costs $300,000 going out of district, you subtract the threshold of $49,000, that leaves you about $250,000 in eligible circuit breaker costs.
Okay.
Right? So that happens for every student. It's summarized or added, in aggregate, it's totaled. And whatever that total is, tuition is reimbursed at 75%.
There you go.
And transportation is reimbursed at 57%. Okay? So we get reimbursed on fiscal year '23, students above the threshold in fiscal year '24.
Okay.
Have a question. I don't know if this would be for you or for Jay Fallon, as far as the out-of-district placements. So the potential five students that are going to be possibly placed out of district before the end of this school year, I'm going to assume that they're probably in younger grades, like, you know, not graduating, probably. So that would be for next year also, not just the end of this year, but next year also, correct?
So some of it depends. Some- there are some younger grade ones. We had a couple of students who moved into the district who have some pretty high level of needs that we can't- we can't fulfill here in the district. So we need to look at out-of-district placements for that. There are also some students who will go out for what's called a short-term placement, an eight-week evaluative placement, see how things are, see if there's supports we can put in place in the district. But some of that depends on what that evaluation looks like at the end.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's the total number of out-of-district students we have currently?
Right now? Right now, we have 20 out-of-district, counting those five.
Counting those five?
Counting those five. I put those five in there. Yep.
Okay. So that was circuit breaker.
Sorry to derail you.
Okay. So there's also extraordinary relief circuit breaker, which we haven't filed for in the past because we haven't experienced a need to, because we haven't hit the criteria to receive that reimbursement. So now, what Jay and his team do, they do the same thing for fiscal year '24 this year, tuition and instructional costs. And they have to project out through the rest of the year. If our eligible costs are 25% greater than they were last year, we are eligible for extraordinary relief. Our costs are going to be 25% greater than last year, and that extraordinary relief is reimbursed at 75%.
Okay.
That is, and that is for fiscal year '24 cost, we would get that payment in fiscal year '24.
Okay. So whereas the other one is the following year, this one is almost like, okay, here's some help for now. Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Now, there's also reserve relief circuit breaker. And that is, if your fiscal year '24 eligible costs are greater than 7.5% of last year, and is greater than 0.5% of our fiscal year '23 net school spending, you're eligible for reserve relief circuit breaker. And if that calculation is paid at 100%, but whatever that calculation is, you back out the extraordinary relief, and the remainder is paid at 100%. And that is paid in fiscal year '24 and can be used in fiscal year '24 or fiscal year '25.
Welcome to circuit breaker.
That was actually really, really helpful. Yeah, that was great. Thank you. So we know that at this point with what the budget is looking like, the extraordinary relief is-
If-
No, is that the correct- is knowing the correct word, that we're going to qualify?
We are-
So based on calculations, it looks like we are eligible. We don't make that determination, obviously. Once we put it all in, the state fiscal office, finance office will make that decision. But it looks like, based on calculations and what the parameters are for it, that we'd probably be eligible.
And that gets put in, obviously, before June 30th?
In May.
Okay.
But we should know by March what our payment would be.
Early April will we just-
And then how do we know if we then, above that, qualify for the reserve relief?
We would know once we- once Jay and his staff put together that worksheet of every student, and they have their tuition costs, their instructional costs, once that worksheet is complete, we'll have a really good idea of whether we qualify for either.
Gotcha.
Some of it is that they have a- they have an Excel sheet that calculates some of that. So though, once we start to put in those numbers, it'll show us if we meet certain percentages.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Page two is the salary summary. I've been putting it together for you guys. And, you know, like I said, each week, each payroll that comes along, this gets more and more accurate. So it looks right now that the variance to budget is favorable, which, if it continues, will definitely help us out on the non-salary side of the budget, where we may be in a little bit of-
Crunch.
Crunch. Any questions on that? The third page is the revolving fund balances. Now, we just reviewed this a couple of weeks ago. Not really, much has changed too much. You will see that there's one line item right now, the sped tuitioned revolving. That's in a negative balance. That will not be negative by year-end. We're just waiting for revenues to catch up to the expenses in that account. That account should be zero by year-end. Okay. Pages four through nine. I know at the last school committee meeting, there was a question about revolving funds and what they can be used for. So I pointed out the guidance from the Division of Local Services. And I know there's always questions about, specifically about school choice and what that funding can be used for. So DSE has a pretty good advisory, so I gave you a copy of that, too.
I thought this was really helpful to see, in terms of just understanding how some of these decisions are made internally for how, what line, where something goes. So thank you.
At last meeting, there was a question about what our per-pupil expenditure was. And I, pages 10 through- page 10 is a summary of our per-pupil spending from fiscal year '20, '21, and '22, '23. Although the end-of-year report has been filed, DSE has not updated their calculations for per-pupil spending. Page 10 is the summary, and pages 11 through 16 are the- is statewide. And I sorted that from low to high.
Low to high?
I did. So DSE also has-
My website.
The towns that they compare us to, like-
Ashburnham.
In a world of Newtons and Wellesley's and Norwell, you know what I mean? So I feel like, I felt that I needed to look at it in comparison with districts that at least DSE seemed to see us as comparing to. Wasn't even a word.
We know what I mean.
So that was an interesting exercise. I didn't- I wasn't able to kind of get into it as much as I wanted it to, so I'm not really going to, you know, say anything about it. But it's worth kind of digging into the DSE website and seeing how we perform against the towns that are similarly laid out and have similar demographics to us. So I hope to be able to continue looking into that. But if anybody else wants to, it's cool.
That would be, we'd compare similar districts and then similar municipalities.
Yeah, I looked at it because you can sort it by like, like, number of pupils. So because that's another way to look at it.
Yep, enrollment was in there.
You can look at it from an enrollment standpoint, so you can see, you know, other districts that have, you know, between 2,000 and, you know, like, 23 or 2400 students. You kind of look at it, and you can kind of just pull some of the data from that.
Yeah, it was interesting to play with. So that's- and that's public information, too. So anybody can go on DSE and poke around, so.
John, what's the TTPP? It's in the bottom-left corner of page 10.
Total per-pupil expenditures.
No, I mean, what's TTPP stand for? Do you know? I know-
Total per-pupil expenditures.
TT is probably just total.
Oh, okay.
Like, to- total per-
I was looking for another word that started with T. Never mind.
I was looking for another word that started with T, never mind.
Total.
Never mind.
Another question, Lauren?
Sure, Gordon.
John, I'm sorry I didn't bring this up to you today, but, and you don't have to do it now, but maybe at the next meeting, just drop it in as to what next school spending is by definition and then where we stand with relate, related to that target number based on the state calculation.
Sure.
Thank you.
I would also, back to Jay, with regards to how does special ed impact per pupil spending and then what percentage of our student body is special ed versus what percentage, like the Commonwealth's?
State average.
Just to get, do we have a higher percentage, so therefore our costs are higher? Just understanding, I think that's what it's all about, is just kind of for us to understand the data and what it means.
You want an exact, you want a roundabout?
No.
Okay, I can give you a roundabout right now. So we're about 17.8% of our student population is our students with disabilities. That's how the state categorizes it. On the average in Massachusetts right now, it's round about 20%.
So we're on the lower side.
We're a little on the lower side. You know, our numbers are increasing as they are, to be frankly, across the Commonwealth. Our numbers are increasing, and I need to go back to Superintendent McGos' point, one of them is that is housing is more available here in this community, people moving in and then moving in with kids, and sometimes there are kids with disabilities, so, but we're a little bit on the lower end, you know? I mean, ideally, would like to be even lower than that, you know, so.
Okay, thank you. If you look at the per pupil worksheet, the one with the towns, the column to the far right is total expenditures, that includes special ed. The column to the left is total in district, which excludes special ed.
Okay.
So when you say includes special ed?
Tuitions.
So anything out of district?
Anything out of district and.
Specialized services, anything across that.
Anything relating to special education.
Thanks for conserving ink and making the print nice and small, by the way.
I think whenever I think of budget and I think of this point when anything is coming up with special ed and that task for budget, is that the forecast for this is there's no, it's not improving. So with these decisions and thinking about these types of things, this is, this is not improving.
No.
So looking ahead, when you guys, you know, we're talking always about this big picture and what the view is and what's the five-year plan or the 10-year plan, and even though you can't predict what special services are needed or what out-of placement is needed, there's got to be room in the budget that's set aside for how to manage when this is happening because even though you don't know when it's going to happen or who or how, it's going to happen. The services are just exceptional and you can just even looking at what the central school students are being provided, when you just look and see what's coming through, budget-wise, we really need to be very considerate of these services are only going to continue to be heavy for us.
And that's one of the reasons that we opened up that special ed reserve account about three years ago, and there's $250,000 in it. We certainly don't want to go to that all the time and, you know, pillage that account, but we also know that we did that for a reason, knowing that we have a little bit of a safety net in case of, you know, the floor opens up.
Last week, I was at the White House Business Meeting and every single person, there was about 18 business managers in that meeting, every single person's school district is having the same issues.
It'll just be very interesting to see how the state ends up responding to that, too, right? Because there's going to be many more districts now accessing relief funds that have never accessed them before, so that'll be interesting. But that's bigger than East Bridgewater, I guess, right? But that's just.
Right, which makes it hard for Jay and I because, you know, last year we reimbursed 75%. Now, all these additional schools are going to be looking for additional reimbursement. Is the state going to fund it still at 75%?
You're going to change the formula on there, yeah.
It makes budgeting very difficult. All right, and the remainder of the package is just a copy for you for what we submitted to the Capitol Committee for fiscal year '25 cap. Basically, six items, the piano lab at the junior senior high school, the weight room. We continue to update our switches. Those are very expensive. Last year we did five, the year before we did four, this year we're doing three. Our access points at the high school, all replaced, and a couple audiovisual projects for the gym, so I can get Gina to stop complaining about us using a small little amplifier in there.
Thank you.
In the auditorium, some updates. So I know we're trying to set up a Capitol Committee meeting. I asked them if they wouldn't mind meeting down here so we could actually walk around and I can show them what we're looking to replace.
Frame carpet.
And the last thing I have, it's not on my agenda, is the busing bid. I pretty much finished my edits to the busing bid. I sent it out yesterday to the attorneys just to give a once-over to make sure I didn't miss anything, so that should be going out hopefully next week.
I'm not looking forward to hearing how that goes. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Is anyone here for public comment? No?
If you're here for public comment, you need to sign in and come up and state your name.
Good. Okay. And now we have our action items.
Did you want me to explain circuit breaker again?
Glad you did.
Want to sit up here?
I will take a motion after review on payroll warrant 29 PS dated 1/17/24.
I'll move.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Peter. We'll take a motion.
Do you need a roll call?
Oh, we do need to do a roll call because Gordon's here. Good looking out, Gordon.
Sorry, sorry.
No, you're not.
McKinnon, aye.
McKinnon, aye, Foster, aye.
Walker, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Epstein, Furya.
Fidler, aye.
I will take a motion on accounts payable warrants 26 SV dated 12/27/23 and 30 SV dated 1/24/24.
I'll move.
Moved by Ellen, second by Scott.
McKinnon, aye.
Foster, aye.
Walker, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Furya, aye.
Fidler, aye.
And I will take a motion to approve the minutes from the school committee meeting of January 9th, 2024.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Ellen, second by Scott. All in favor?
McKinnon, aye.
Foster, aye.
Walker, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Furya, aye.
Fidler, aye.
And, thank you, Ellen, do you want to mention it?
Sure, I'll mention it.
Go for it.
We have a mattress fundraiser sale, if anybody's in the, if anybody's interested in getting a mattress.
Or pillows or blankets.
Yes, pillows, blankets, there's lots of good.
Sash and guns.
Yes, there's lots of good stuff on this. Come to our school this coming Sunday, let's see what the time. Junior Senior High School, sorry, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Saturday, January 27th. Oh, I thought it was on Sunday, it's on Saturday.
There'll be a bunch of teenage students sleeping on the mattresses.
Yes. They have this fundraiser every single year and we would love to see you come down and purchase a mattress, and it benefits the students.
The music, music parents?
Yes. Is there a link to go online?
Yes, you ready? Text for more info, EB24 to 617-553-7722 or www.cfsbeds.com. Also, you could find a student that's involved in the music program and ask them for information.
Maybe you can even get a discount coupon from, if they have a flyer to give you. They have mattress protectors, luxury pillows.
Stop. Okay, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll move.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Scott. You got it.
McKinnon, aye.
Foster, aye.
Walker, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Furya, aye.
Fidler, aye.
And so we are adjourned. Thank you.